Agenda for January the 28th, a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Gorlick, Councillor Krag, all those in favor. We have minutes from January the 14th. This is the special to go in camera. Motion to adopt those minutes. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Gorlick, all those in favor. And the regular meeting of January 14th, the minutes. Councillor Studley, Councillor Johnson, all those in favor. I gotta get you on the minutes here. Okay. Our first item of business is the Circle of Indigenous Nations Society requesting an implementation proposal for Aboriginal Head Start program in Grand Forks. You've got the information sent to you and welcome. You can come up front and use the mic there if you'd like to.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us this evening. My name is Chris Alakin. My family is interior Salish to my dad from the Inuktitmanpurs Nation over in the Nikola Valley area. And I'm the executive director of the Circle of Indigenous Nations Society, which is Aboriginal nonprofit society delivering services through the West Kootenai and Boundary region.
And good evening, group, buddy. My name is Luranah Andrasov. I live here in Grand Forks, B.C. I was born and raised here. I'm Russian on my father's side and Danish and Métis on my mother's side. And we also have an honored guest with us, Jeanne Lloyd. She's the president of the local Métis Association in the Boundary, as well as a council member on the COINs elders council.
Welcome.
Before we talk a little bit about sharing some really exciting information and opportunity for the Grand Forks and Boundary area, I just wanted to share a little bit about our society. So we're located, our main office is in Kalsigarh, but we do provide services across the region. We currently have 11 staff, nine programs. Five of those programs are actually delivered here in the Boundary Grand Forks area. Four of those programs are local staff, Luranah being one of those. And I just, I want to also share a little bit about our council. It's governed by 11 indigenous elders across the Kootenai Boundary region. And I think I just also want to acknowledge the influx of clients that's been seen by COINs. We've been around since 2013, and we've really built a foundation that provides cultural support and services for indigenous families across the region.
And so as you are aware, there is no bound or reserve here in the Boundary, yet over 25% of school district, 51 students self-identify as indigenous, whether that's First Nations, Métis, or Inuit. So we're in a very unique position here in the Boundary to have a partner like COINs delivering services in our area because we don't have a boundary reserve. What's really exciting is that we have the support of the school district, of Boundary Family Services, of the Childcare Resource and Referral Program, as well as the Sunshine Valley Childcare Society in this endeavor. So this started last year. There was a call for expression of interest throughout the province to help Aboriginal Head Start programs grow. And we submitted an expression of interest and placed 14th in the province. The first 12 projects got to move forward to the implementation proposal phase. Some of those projects, we learned, were not successful in moving forward. So we got a callback just less than two weeks ago that we have another opportunity to submit this implementation proposal. And it's due February 22nd. So if we were successful, the first round, we would have had from June of 2018 until February to get this going, and we have five weeks. And we are so excited because we have a lot of the foundation groundwork already laid. Aboriginal Head Start is a wonderful program. It's a free family resource early intervention program. And it also would provide free childcare spaces in our community, as well as a starting wage for early childhood educators of $25 an hour. That's huge because the going rate for early childhood educators across the province ranges from about $14 an hour up to about $20. And so this would be such an amazing opportunity for residents of the Boundary. We were very sad last year, I guess you could say, because we got the news that we were not successful moving forward right after the flood. And this could have been such an amazing opportunity for us in that time of need. But we now have the opportunity today. And we are so excited to work with Grand Forks City Council to try and make this opportunity a reality for the citizens of Grand Forks.
So one of the main components that the Aboriginal Head Start provincially is looking for is they want to ensure communities have a structure and land to put a structure. So they're guaranteeing 10 years of operational funding, as well as about $600,000 to build a structure. So this is almost unheard of, that capital costs are being offered to an organization, more specifically, an indigenous organization. So, you know, as Luranah alluded to the five weeks, yeah, it's five weeks. We have a team of seven people. I feel like we can make the proposal happen with those seven people. However, what our concern is, can we make it happen with the $600,000? And after doing some research and talking to some various home builders, modular home builders, what they're saying to us is the $600,000 would probably be enough to actually build the structure. So it would look like a, about a 1,500 square foot modular home that is specifically designed for a childcare center, where we would have about 20 to 24 childcare spaces, infant toddler being one of the highest needs in community we're hearing. And it would be placed on a foundation. So the kind of, the foundation would be above ground basement that would have office spaces, not only for our staff at the center, but also staff coming in trying to kind of create that wraparound service. So when families enter our childcare center, they know they can also speak with a speech pathologist for their child or occupational therapist for their child. And so they're not feeling like they have to go to various other places to access those services. And we know from our history, and we know from the research, and we know from our families, the voices, that it's not always comfortable for our families to access a mainstream service. And so I think we're missing a lot of families in this area to be able to provide those services from a cultural lens. So really what we're looking for is a piece of land. We're looking for a piece of land where we can put our center on, guarantee funding for 10 years for that to operate, for that to flow through. Luranah alluded to, parents aren't going to have to pay for these childcare spaces. So what it means for indigenous families is those families that are struggling and thinking about attending secondary or thinking about going out into the workforce, this barrier is removed, that childcare space is available and gives them an opportunity to be able to move forward and to do better in life, to do better for their children and to do better for their families and community. And so with that, we'd like to give space for any questions that you might have. I'm a little nervous, I might have talked a little quickly than I'm used to, but I'm certainly open, and Luranah's open, to trying to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. And Councillor Krag starts the call.
Yeah, I, when I saw that you were on the agenda, I went to the main website. I read through all of that. I went to the school district to read up about their Boundary Aboriginal Enhancement Programs. To me, it almost sounds like some of the stuff is kind of already being done. So that was one thing. And some questions, it said to fulfill childhood or childcare gaps. So one question was answered, it's free family resource. The other question, for who? So it's for specifically Aboriginal and the well-paying jobs. In the school district, they said they specifically hired Aboriginal. So there's going to be 24 spaces for children identifying as Aboriginal, but nobody else. Is that correct?
So priority would be given to indigenous children and families. And the school district does an amazing job at meeting children's cultural needs at the school district level. We're talking about before you enter school, for children six years and younger. And so that is a huge gap. There's, aside from Aboriginal earlier outreach, a 12-hour a week position here in the Boundary, we don't meet those cultural needs for our children before they enter the school system.
Okay. And the last thing I'll ask, because I asked this of any group ever that comes to the city of Grand Forks. First question I ask is, what did the whole regional district say? And what's their support? So you're talking, this is boundary-wide, but the cost burden is to the taxpayers of Grand Forks in donating land. So what's Greenwood doing, what's Midway doing? What's Beaverdale, Bridesville, all of the other communities? What's their contribution?
So we have not got there yet because we just got the callback. If we had had the same timeframe as other candidates with working from a June 2018 till now, we definitely would be able to answer all those questions. And we can definitely work on connecting with those communities. The plan initially, from what we were told from Aboriginal Head Start from the province, is that it's important to establish a program in a community where the uptake can be there. And we can definitely prove that in the Grand Forks area. And hopefully expand out to the West Boundary and have a center in Midway eventually.
Okay, that was the other question because I was looking at the, when I looked at the school district's site, they said anywhere from 25 plus 27% identified. And that's boundary-wide. So my question would be, how many are actually in Grand, so the city of Grand Forks and Area D, that sort of valley, right? So how many of that 25%?
This program would be accessible to any child and family that wanted to access it throughout the Boundary. So if a family had the capacity to get here from Greenwood, that program would be available to them.
Oh yes, no, I fully understand that. I was just wondering about the 25%, how it breaks down over the Boundary. Like what's the region, is Beaverdale account for 7%? And the city accounts for 12, or eight, or 20, right? So that type of question. If you're one, I just don't like giving away anything.
Of course.
Period, whether it's money, or land, or anything. And if I, I want to do it, not want to do it, but depend on what council wants, I want to see contributions from the other people that are going to benefit it. Right? So not just provincial money, saying, I'll give you 600 grand and we're going to build this, and you're going to hire some people. No, if you're drawing from anywhere else in the Boundary, what is their contribution?
So clearly, this is a regional service.
Yeah.
And if you have vacant spots because you don't meet your quota in the Grand Forks area, will you be open to children who are not identified as Native?
I would definitely say that that would be a possibility. We would have to work with Aboriginal Head Start Association of B.C. under their mandate to make that happen.
The other question is, rather than donating the land, would it work, and maybe you have to check on this, if we leased you property on a long-term lease, would that be an option in terms of meeting a criteria of your funding body?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I guess the only thing that pops up for me is when we pour a basement, it's then on a permanent foundation. And so if, for instance, the funding stopped 10 years from now, because we already guaranteed the 10 years' funding, then what do we do with our investment as well? And would the city buy that structure back? Or what would that look like? But we would be open to some sort of something around that.
Right, and I think that could be covered in a lease arrangement, if we were making lease arrangements. Before we go to Councillor Krag, is there any other further questions? Councillor Thompson, let me just get a couple other people on.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have, have you given thought to a location where you would like to build your building?
Ideally, we would love a location that would be more centrally located for families. Transportation can be a barrier when we go more in the rural side of things. So that's something that we definitely would want to consider, but also open to any creative possibilities, working with some sort of a busing system, if that was the only land that was available to be donated for this project. We're open to working with you guys in whatever capacity that needs.
But you haven't thought of a specific location within the city that you would?
We did do something today. There is a lot kind of across from where New Food Bank is. And there's about a little triangle there that you guys own, next to a little lot that is for sale. So that was something that we were looking at today.
Yeah.
Councillor Krag, then.
Oh, not, Councillor Mazel.
But we'd be open to whatever other locations you guys have in mind. There's a couple spots, like beside Kel-Town, you know, there's a big two, is it two acres, two and a half acres or something? We wouldn't need all of that land, but maybe a little chunk.
Councillor Mazel.
Yes, thank you, Larissa, and thank you, Chris, for your presentations. I do want to maybe help with a little bit of some of the numbers. I did a little bit of research on this. There are currently 60 kids in kindergarten in Pearlie, Hutton, and Christina Lake, right? One assumes that there's 60 four-year-olds, three-year-olds, two-year-olds. So for a total population of about 300 preschoolers, it's very unpredictable. Even the schools can't predict who's going to walk in the door in September, right? 25% of those, let's say there's 40 children out there. Okay? So I, the other thing I'm thinking about, you know, the concern I have is not so much Councillor Krag, you know, is anybody else paying? It's the timeline. I mean, the one thing about cities is they don't move fast. This is the mills of the gods.
And we would have been before you guys in June if we had gotten a different answer.
Right, pre-medalized.
Yeah, I know, I did check also with Louise Heck, who's the program coordinator for Boundary Childcare Resource Referral. There are currently three schools and three preschools in town, and they are all full. There are two family daycares that are also full. And the Little People Center, which does have some spaces for three to five-year-olds. There are currently no means that any of our daycares for children under three, okay? This is separate from the Head Start, Strong Start, I think I got it right, Strong Starts programs that both Pearlie and Hutton currently run, which might not be running for long, because they've had a drop in things. My point is, I agree that there's a need. And, but I can't, I really can't see this. I guess what I'm saying, ladies, is can you come back next year? You know, if we could put something together that involved other partners in the regional district and the school district. And I know there's, you know, the building behind Pearlie, has the First Nations crest on it, everything. And it originally was to be a Strong Start building, that maybe we can establish some partners in it, in this thing, and bring them to the table too. I would like to think that we, you know, with a growing population of young people, that we would support preschools of any sort, especially ones that would take all children, right? That's really the other thing that the city has to do, is we have to support all children. That, I think, you know, we would be more amenable to this. I hope that the governing body that is AHS, is it AHSC, right, I think, can see their way forward to offering this support again. I can see that there's, you know, there's 12 done, and there's some, from that website, others pending around the province. And I certainly would like to see us take advantage of any fresh money that could come into our community to support young kids. But like I said, I can't see that by February 22nd, the city's going to come up with a lot and offer it to you. We just, I just can't see us doing that. So that's my problem I have with your current request, is that I'm just wondering, how do we do that adequately? And I'm hoping that if you do have a future request, that we have a little bit more lead-in time.
So you realize the risk that they may lose this funding and not get it in future years?
I understand that.
If we don't work with them?
Yeah, but we might not, he's saying, sorry. He's saying that bureaucracy, I'm not, sorry. The bureaucracy and just the legislative requirements that a city has to go through. And it says, sure. So for us, this is the 11th hour. That's probably how you're feeling too. It would have been nice to keep fleshing it, that out, and then you'd be ready for next year, you'd be ready for this. Creative fixes. And how we work as a city is really complicated. Remember I said I don't like giving away land or anything? But I do not have a problem giving away other people's land. So school district has a fair amount of land, right? The example was, we are trying to put two tennis courts down on Barbara Ann Park, and it was going to be completely on the taxpayer, blah, blah, blah. And then we partnered with the school district, and so now there's what, four or six tennis courts? So they're, they can probably free up land. Like you see, there's that building behind Hutton, and there's, like you said, Pearlie and stuff like that. So in the corner of school district property, and they're, I'm not sure how their bylaws were, it seemed really quick to get the use for those tennis courts. So I am fully in support of using school district.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Krag. At this point, I hear support in principle for this, but a fear that we're not going to be able to come through. But I don't know what your relationship to your funder is, that if you have a level of support that you could work over an extended period here, over the next few months, to actually find an appropriate site that the city would agree to. So is anyone here, Councillor, against more daycare? No?
No, I'm not against daycare, I just want to, want to say.
Yes, I think you've made it very clear, Councillor.
Yeah, depending, because I went to the COIN website, and the word that possibly could be spaces open for non-Arabian, right? And Chris put it quite well, we're responsible for all, not a segment. Whether it's a segment that's had an unfair deal since everybody entered the country. But it's, if you said you'd have to go back to the people that run the program, and if it was in writing, that priority is given, but it's not exclusive. That goes a long way for a community to accept.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just mention, I think that, you know, from my understanding on this particular proposal, if we had something in writing saying it was highly likely, although given the time restraints, we need to work it out, that might be workable and acceptable to the funder. We do have one whole year, we have until April 1st of 2020 to open the center doors. So after this five-week process of gathering data and providing information and research, we do have the time to actually go through those motions and create the center and create partnerships.
So there is some flexibility there. Can I ask our planning department for comment?
Thank you through the mayor. I noticed that you asked for commercial zoning, and I'm a little confused by that because we allow daycares and we allow religious or spiritual centers in residential zoning. Is there something in your grant that requires it to be commercial?
Nope, you just informed me of the process, thank you.
And then the other thing, I mean, it is a potential use on, I mean, community use of property?
So it looks like there are some options. I see a reluctance in council at this point in a pig and a poke approach here because we're not really clear on where we're going with this or what property we're talking about. Can we accept the report and send it back to staff for some consultation on the possibilities? Councillor Thompson?
I would make that resolution, but I would also ask that in the interim, that you work with our planning department to find out what properties could be available for that and to come back with a more specific proposal. Would that, would that work?
Yeah, through the mayor, and we'll need some clarification in regards to servicing and things like that, and whether or not your grant actually comes with money that would pay for servicing, because that would have to be an end find, you know, a piece that the city would have to donate and put into the budgeting.
Or lease, yeah.
Or, you know, or a lease would work. We do have examples of leases with the city that are 50, 60-year leases. You know, if you need a minimum 10-year lease or something, because that's your funding, there are, I mean, there are ways to go with that. I mean, we can maybe bring some of those.
Councillor Krag.
Yeah, so if we want to talk lease, there are some things that come up. We have a housing project, 50 years, after 50 years is over. It goes back to the city, period, no improvements, nothing, right? So I'm not sure if you'd even be interested in anything like that. And if you could, along with working with the planning department. Now, if they come up and they say, oh, look, it would work on this property, this property, this property, this property, it doesn't mean that any of those properties will be up. People get excited because the city said, oh, it'll fit here. And the rest of council has other plans for that property. That's why people were kind of smiling when you were talking about the triangle property. So at the same time, if you could go back to the funders and just say, is that part, and can you put that in writing? Because if you can get something in writing, then we'll put something in writing.
Okay, so lots of teeth to cross here with council. Did you get a second or for your motion?
Nor did we.
Second. That's my addition, that they go back and ask for clarification.
And I just want to assure all of you that the programs that COINs offers are inclusive. So although we do deliver our programs from an indigenous lens, I provide services to many non-indigenous families because they are very open and accepting to the culture. Many families attend our drum circles, our traditional parenting programs that are non-indigenous. We are open and welcome all people.
Thank you. And I think you make a great contribution to the quality of life and have for a number of years in this community. And so we're sending this back for our staff to take a look at in terms of an optional place. And we're hoping that you can jump through some hoops and obtain the funding for our community. I think it would be a real dream if we do.
But further to that, I would also like to be able to provide a letter in support of the project, wording so that, you know, we haven't closed the door, but to allow you to proceed with your application. And it would be.
Okay, now I got to ask Councillor Krag if he agrees with that change to the motion.
The only change, that was much.
Because well.
There'll be a second motion, and we can just.
Yeah, that's probably.
Okay, let's clear up the one first that we're going to accept and send it back to staff, all those in favor. Okay, and the second motion being?
Is that we provide a letter to COINs that you are, I'm sorry, our administrator wanted to say something.
I guess I just want everyone to be aware that you're likely not going to get anything by February 22nd, that that, you know, think we're going to get answers prior to that.
No, no, but can we not provide a letter indicating that we are supporting the project?
Supporting in principle is totally acceptable.
Yeah, so that they can proceed with their.
Okay, so this is a motion to support in principle, by support.
Committing land.
Not committing anything.
No, but, but.
Somewhere in the community.
I could.
Can I output the wording?
Councillor Mazel, please.
Can I output the wording?
Please.
The council write a letter of support of this project, pending further clarification from the project initiators and staff.
There we go. Perfect.
Is that, is that suffice in the remarks?
That sounds wonderful, thank you. And I just want to deeply thank you all for your time. As a Grand Forkian, born and raised, it has been a tremendous honor to return to my community and help give back to those that helped raise me and help our future generation. and help give back to those that helped raise me and help our future generations. And this is just another opportunity to, um, to continue that wonderful work. And in closing, I would like to offer each of you a token of our gratitude and a token of respect. It's a tobacco tie. And so tobacco is one of our four sacred medicines in our area.
Thank you very much, Lorraine and Chris. And, uh, yeah. Council, we still have that last motion on the table to go on?
Yeah.
Did you get a second?
Okay, so repeat the last motion.
We, we support in principle, that council write a letter of support in principle of the project and further clarification from the project initiators and staff.
Okay, second.
All right, all those in favor?
All in favor.
Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connection is acting up again here.
Oh, nice.
Trying to get back to where. It's. There you go.
Interconnection.
Oh, interconnection. My connection.
Yeah.
The same thing happened here, I just went back to that, that link, that link.
We are experiencing technical difficulty. Please stay tuned.
Yeah, it needs a special. Power.
I'm good.
What?
I can just not go back and forth on these. If you.
That's in case I need to move, you gotta see it together. They're wireless, it's wider.
Okay, council, sorry about that. Not my fault.
You pushed the button.
I did. No unfinished business and we're down to council reports. We have a number of reports this evening. Any of those councillors wish to comment on the written reports and verbal reports are.
Have a motion to receive the reports.
We usually do that after.
Oh, okay.
I think so.
Does anybody want to talk?
Comments on your written reports, Councillor Mazlin?
Oh, okay, mayor, uh, you know, I did in my, in my report, uh, my visit, participation with the REIT Commission and their, their infrastructure challenges going forward. These project, these facilities are well-used, but are going to be needing some serious upgrades in the future. And we're trying to deal with that. Uh, the other, the other thing, the other piece of infrastructure that I also want to talk about, we talked about, is the beating with the library board. Uh, and this, this facility is also in need of some important repairs. A new, um, heating ventilation system as well as, there's a leak in the roof. Uh, their public washrooms also need to be upgraded for accessibility. Moreover, after, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the future of the basement of this facility. For the first time in probably decades, the basement of this live, of the library has been cleaned out. The jip rock has been removed and stands ready for some transformation. Council, what we're waiting upon is, uh, some information about how much insurance we're going to get for the damage that was done to the basement by the flood. And then we're going to have to try to vision how to, uh, how to bring that basement up to current codes of accessibility and fireproofing or not. Anyhow, that's ahead of council and.
6,000 square feet.
6,000 square feet to be liberated. Uh, it will, it could be expensive though, and there are other repairs to the building. But nonetheless, uh, the infrastructure of the library, that facility, as well as the REIT Commission facilities are certainly well-used and love, and there are going to be challenges probably for this council and the community within our term.
Thank you.
Thanks, mayor.
Other council reports. Hearing on a motion to receive council reports. Councillor Korlik, seconded, Councillor Zelinski, all those in favor? Regional district report, that's from me. Um, we have another meeting coming up this week. And, um, I hope to bring back more specifics on a few issues that we're looking at. Right now, all I can say is that during the budget session and all the orientation ones that we've done in the last week, they're, they're working really hard at their asset management plan, which I'm happy to say this council has dealt with for a number of years. We seem to be fairly far out ahead in terms of the regional district. The big ones for the regional districts are really our assets, as Councillor Mazlin has repeated. There's a lot of consideration at this point about the, the lifelines of some of our larger buildings here. The, the library not being the only one, but the, the curling rink, the swimming pool and all of the recreation facilities. So, um, they're trying very hard at their end to keep their costs down while realizing that they have also fallen well behind on some of their assets in putting money aside in reserves and having enough for that. So, um, that's all I wanted to say this evening. Also, I have a book that describes everything you ever wanted to know about the regional district. It's in the councillor lounge and you're welcome to look at it. Very complex organization. I have to say that even though I've been involved in it for many, many years, this orientation session again opened my mind to the complexity of this organization and the size of it. So it's, it's a difficult task to continue to work closely with it. We are moving ahead quickly with the motion that will set in place the relationship between Area D and the city for a variety of projects. This opens doors that we haven't had open before. So I think they're really considering our needs here on this side of the mountain at this point. That's my report, any questions about the regional district? Hearing non-emotion to accept my report. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Krog, all those in favor? Recommendations from staff for decisions. As some of you know, we have talked about this council local tribal reimbursement. Tonight, I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept a recommendation that's on the table on the basis that this, at this point, will at least give some recognition for local travel. The idea of filing for mileage and local travel is actually on our books and I was reminded of this by our finance department, that we actually have a bylaw that allows us to charge mileage other than to regularly scheduled council meetings, which I would see including regular council meetings and the committee of the whole meetings. So let's see how that works. But in the meantime, there is a commitment to go forward with the motion that was made by the previous council to set up an independent review. What I'm hearing at the regional table right now is that many small municipalities like ours have not adapted to the change of taxation status and that many are taking home less for the job they're doing than they were last year. And so we need that reviewed, but given the, the timeframes and the pressure on staff, they're asking that we delay this committee being formed until after taxation season is over. That means that we can give some thought at this point to two representatives from the community that we would consider being appropriate to sit on a three-person committee. Our CFO would be the other person. And that would happen sometime after the taxation period has passed. So I think it's been adequately dealt with and I would ask for a motion to accept the recommendation on the $50 a month, uh, mileage for local travel. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Korlik, further discussion, Councillor Krog?
Yeah, I, I have concerns.
Do you want to share them with us?
Yes. There's not enough of in the world, no. Um, I like the idea of tracking and asking for mileage. And, and I know it puts extra burden on staff as far as calculating it and stuff, but it's done at the regional district. It seems to me, rather than just give me $50 a month, which would be awesome, but I'd rather get money if I put in a piece of paper and show that I went from A to B. Right, so that's, if the majority of council is in favor, then I'll support it, but.
So you realize this is just temporary until the review and we could add to that review.
Didn't I say the review is 2020, 2022?
No, it's every four years, but there's been no starting point. And so the starting point for this review that we're setting up would be this year, after taxation.
Sorry, but I, I read it as, where do you go? I'm kicked out. But I read it, there'd be a review in 2022 or something.
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the official wording of the bylaw is that it's supposed to happen in the first six months of 2022. But because it's such a concern and it hasn't happened in a while, uh, this, this panel hasn't gotten together to review the remuneration. Um, when we spoke last, it was the, that the plan to maybe do this later this year, but after taxation is done. So Ms. Rose will have time for that?
Yeah, that would make sense. Can we just lose the 2022 or whatever?
Yeah.
Out of it? And it just says, uh, reimbursement until the committee meets or something.
That's acceptable.
Got the first six months of 2022. Is that, like, that's a goal for how many years before it's like that?
But it's just a policy. And, oh, but are, are we limiting the bylaw?
No.
This is just the policy that would see us through to the end of 2022. But if you have a, if you have a committee that's formed that reviews it, they can come back with a, a change and a recommendation to amend the policy.
Right, so we could say this is year one.
Or to amend the bylaw.
And we could do it again in four years.
Yes, because if you recall, Councillor Krog, when we were discussing remuneration for council and the increase and, um, staff had come back with a proposal and that council opted not to, um, other than what, the cost of living, I think, is, is whatever. Um, did not want to do anything to compensate for the.
For the loss, the changes and.
And that it was going to be referred to this new council to deal with. That was my understanding.
Yeah.
And we are dealing with it, Councillor Mazlin?
Mayor, just a suggestion about the wording in the motion is that we strike until October 22nd, till October 2022 and replace it with until a review by the council remuneration expenses advisory group. So that retakes the time I, out of it, you know, and allows.
Why put someone in there? Because you've got to have it done by.
Allows them to, staff to have that, set up that advisory group when they find that the time is reasonable after taxation. And anyhow, and it doesn't tie, it doesn't put it off for four years.
Okay, I've got it. Sorry, I'd like to be recognized.
I recognize you.
Uh, council in six months of 2022, or sooner.
Just add the or sooner.
Or sooner.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Do you agree to that motion?
That's simple.
In your second, yeah. There you go. All those in favor? Carrie.
Besides, I'm too lazy, I have to put it down.
Down, down, until we get to bylaws, fees and charges, amendment bylaws. We have a motion on that. This is the water rates. Motion by Councillor Studley, seconded by Councillor Krog. Discussion, Councillor Zelinski.
Um, yes, overlooking the rates and whatnot, um, staff and I have talked a little bit about it. Um, the, the math is sound, pay, pay for the service. But I'm afraid that there's going to be a real big jump in people's utility bills. When you go from 25 cents a cubic meter up to 55 cents a cubic meter, I don't know how that's going to affect people. Um, again, I believe in the math, the service should pay for itself and that's what we have in front of us. I just don't know how it's going to affect the community.
You're worried about the impact on the user, that there may be a different response than what we're anticipating from?
Well, I, I guess for me personally, one of the reasons I moved to this town was because you could grow anything, it's green, it's lush, it's a beautiful community. I would hate to see that water rates change that.
Okay, that's understood. Um, does anyone want to talk about it? Would you like to talk about this film?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to explain how the calculations were done and on what basis. Uh, when the water rates review was done just over a year ago, it was, the council of the day had three choices for which model they would, they would opt for. And they went with, um, the cost of the water service to be financed half by a fixed rate and half by, um, by the consum, by the usage rate. And so this is the outcome of that, is those calculations. Um, under this structure, it would, the, um, the, the, the charges would equate to a fixed charge that's equivalent to about 400 cubic meters of water a year. Um, and then anybody who would use more than that would be paying more than what they would have paid at, would be paying under just a fixed charge. So there's, there will be, um, the low water users will benefit from this. The high water users will be paying for what they're using. So either way, you know, the, the current system where it's a flat charge, you have the low water users who are in effect subsidizing the high water users.
Right. In the event that we're making too much money on this, are we going to know fairly quickly that we're overcharging? Um, are there checks and bounds in terms of your estimate as to usage levels? Which is a variable, part of it?
Yes, and it is difficult to anticipate what, once people stop having to pay for their usage, whether they will reduce or not. And so I did have built a bit of a, I, I assume that the water, um, consumption will go down 25% for the residential users, but that's also based on the fact, that's based on our actual consumption numbers, which include, uh, some probably some leakages and people who just turn their hoses on and leave them running all day and, um, and so I, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable. It's, it's a bit of a conservative estimate because we don't want to come out down, come out with lower revenue. Um, but it's hard to tell. I mean, I guess we could review it after, probably six months might be, of course, we're going from.
Different seasons.
Different seasons too, yeah, so a whole year's worth of data is better.
Okay, so we'll be watching that, Councillor Zelinski, and, and thank you very much. Okay, on the table, further comment?
Just one of the things that I did notice is that the, um, I know with Councillors Zelinski, and I had a chat about this earlier, is that the by monthly fixed charge for business industrial, um, that is, is reduced from what it was, uh, in the original, the, the bylaw that we're rescinding or replacing. So, um.
The service, service charges go down.
Yeah. No, they've gone down.
Down, okay.
Yeah, so that may compensate and address your concern.
Okay, council, you ready for the question? Councillor Mazlin?
So is it really the, to put a review, uh, in the motion?
Well, I don't know whether we need it since we will be reviewing this in our annual review of cost and charges.
Okay.
Don't we need to complicate it because certainly it's an estimate and we will need to watch it, so.
Well, we're going to need the four years data before we can make a strong decision anyway.
Yeah, two seasons, four seasons. Forget how many seasons are.
At least the years, you know.
Yeah. Okay, ready for the question? This is, uh, water rates, all those in favor? Opposed? Is that opposed?
Yeah, let's do that.
Do you want that recorded?
No, I don't.
For posterity?
Not today, not today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor, that whooed that fast.
Yeah, I.
Just to clarify, by default, I record all the opposed, so.
For me, personally, if I ask for a recorder board, I expect to see it in the minutes. How you record it, otherwise I can't.
All right. Right. Thank you, next item. This is first and second reading for bylaw amendment, North Boundary Drive Mobile Home Park. And I have a motion to that effect. This is to move it to first and second reading to public. Counselor Corlick, Counselor Thompson. Questions, comments? This takes it to public?
Yeah, I know we've got a lot of opportunities down the road, Mr. Mayor, but the two things. First of all, I'm concerned about the access, especially on the exit where we don't have a full road width. What's the plans for dealing with that?
Do we need to address this at this point, planning?
We've already reviewed it, our engineers have looked at it, and the fire chief has looked at it, and nobody has any concerns.
Okay, so it basically meets our criteria at this point for those items.
So just clarification, just a minute. So that half the road width will be going two ways, so.
That's a call of the fire marshal.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's, the sixty-six-foot road right-of-ways that we see is our normal standard. That's a highway standard. And it's made so that you can have a full-width highway with drainage and sidewalks and streetlights. And so sidewalks on both sides of the streets. So this would be, we'd be looking at a rural standard. It is a dead-end road, and you're not expecting to have a bunch of two-way traffic. And like any place that's imperfect, the locals will learn, you know, how to
Try it carefully.
How to drive careful. And the fire chief has looked at it, and he's happy with it. The public works has looked at it, they're happy with it in terms of snow removals. So we've given it a full review.
And you will have opportunities after the public hearings?
Yeah, yeah. One other comment, please.
Yes.
Is there any chance, or under your comprehensive development zone, a sensitive ecosystems? If I've got the creation of the zone correctly, this one here is setting up so that we can change zones a bit. This one in front of us is to do more setbacks on this project. And I think this zone gives us some flexibility to do different things. I would hate to see a project not fit just because if it didn't have a sense of ecosystem component.
So I'm wondering if we shouldn't carry this to a further discussion of the concept of comprehensive development zones at another point where we could get further into the creation of those? And what are the criteria for whether or not you're compliant or not? Another occasion, go ahead.
We have discussed, actually, the owner is here. We have discussed actually subdividing that piece off. So that piece would be actually subdivided off from the main part. And it's going to be, it's in our sense of development per area, regardless of whether it's on private property or public property. And it will be managed as such. And the owner has gotten a registered professional to come in and look at it and get, and I believe, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, that they're looking at some potential mitigation as well to ensure that that sense of ecosystem is protected.
Okay, and I would like to discuss this comprehensive zone thing at another date, rather than getting into the details, which is going to come back to us anyway. We could schedule that for another time to talk about what entails, what it's all about. Okay, on the floor is to move it to first and second reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrying. And number C, I just touched my screen, look at that. So this is a request for a first and second reading on zoning bylaw amendments, cannabis retail stores, accessible parking spaces, and other minor changes. So this is a bit of an omnibus and includes a number of things that we're wanting to clean up in terms of bylaws. We're being asked to accept them while moving forward. We would be amending all of these various bylaws, including the amendment to the cannabis retail zone. And I was asked by a counselor, if we remove the fifty meters from the highway rule, would you also want to remove the hundred-meter separation rule? And the answer that I have to that is that having it in there right now does immediately cause a conflict and future conflicts for that hundred-meter setback. So the motion that I'm accepting here is that we take both of those items off the zoning bylaw, that we amend both of those to take them off.
The amendment disregards those two numbers.
Right. Okay, and the one that we're leaving on for cannabis right now is a hundred-meter setback on industrial land where we still have the option, where the applicant has to come forward for a variance, and we can decide on what kind of a cannabis operation you're talking about, which would give us a better idea whether we wanted to hold to the hundred-meter setback or give a variance on it. So that one would stay in place, but the other two would go. Yes?
The two in regards to cannabis are both in regards to the retail cannabis zone.
Yeah.
There isn't, we don't, there should be some there. Okay, sorry, do you want to add?
I was wandering.
Okay.
Thank you. So, yeah, that's not part of it. Counselor Maslin.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I, it is an omnibus bylaw. We're trying to patch up other places too right now. Makes me nervous. I'm certainly in favor of the amendments to the cannabis regulations, that is, a hundred-meter setback. It's just too prescriptive, you know? We don't make shoe stores do that. Anyhow, but what I, I'm wondering about some of the other corrections. And I guess what I'm wondering, is this a good time to insert a definition of commercial into our zoning bylaw?
I would think this would stand separately, but you could certainly make that motion that we define that better in a separate motion.
I would, well, we have a motion on the floor. So if I make an amendment, is that in order, Mayor? I would make an, let me propose it, then you can, or do you want to say, you want to give that?
Your worship, it would likely be cleaner if council addresses the readings as typical for the zoning case if there was another amend or another resolution or motion that council wanted to do. It would be suggested to do that separately.
So that was my suggestion, and we just make it a separate motion, you can deploy.
Okay, so I can make a motion after we pass or not, this one?
All right, we're on the floor with this motion, ready for it?
I need a mover and a seconder.
Oh, we did actually, we did.
No, there was the one before.
Okay, so this is for the omnibus bill, looking for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Crogg moves, and Counselor Thompson seconds reluctantly.
Well, I just, you know.
The other things are pretty minor, kind of housekeeping changes on it, but. All those in favor? Counselor Maslin wishes to make another motion.
Yeah, your worship, you know, this is a, as this council and community struggle with the repercussions of B.C. Housing's generosity, you know, we find ourselves pretty much outpaced and in many ways powerless. Anyhow, I was going to move that a new definition, that a definition of commercial building be inserted into our zoning bylaw to include public accessibility. So that a commercial space would have to be publicly accessible.
Have to be public accessible. Okay, we'll take a seconder on that to start with. Counselor Zalinski. Can I ask you, is this a problem?
Well, we're.
Deany, just a second.
Okay.
Certainly.
Just caution, council, unintended consequences. So sometimes when you bring these things in this quick without researching them fully, you could be bringing half of the downtown into a non-compliant state. Because if somebody has an office of some sort that doesn't necessarily have foot traffic coming in and out of it, you can still have an office space downtown. You might service, you might service people overseas, you might service people out of town, but you have an office space downtown in a commercial zone. And it's, you know, it's something we'd have to look into because we wouldn't want to create a situation where we have a bunch of people that are existing non-compliant, which could happen with something like this.
Counselor Maslin.
I quite, if it's, you know, I quite willingly would refer the matter to staff for consideration. I would like it to be a process and with some discussion because I think that in some way, sometimes, our zoning bylaw allows the city to be taken advantage of. And I think we need to signal to the greater powers that we do not like being taken advantage of.
So is there any desire to modify that motion?
No, but if somebody would like to subsequently refer that motion, that might be in order to refer to staff for further advice.
That would be a motion that would take the previous one off and refer the issue of commercial access. Counselor?
If the issue of being public is too much of an issue, like in terms of other businesses, existing businesses, the actual definition of commercial according to dictionary land, which is different than bylaw land, but according to dictionary land, they say that involves making money. So although those offices may not be as accessible as some retail store, they still are there for the purpose of that person and owner of a business making money, which would help address some of our concerns.
So any?
That would disallow any charitable organization or anybody who wanted to have an office space downtown. They don't make money, so that definition wouldn't work. So I'm just saying, it's something that definitely has to be looked into because anytime you make changes like this, you can certainly have unintended consequences, and you've got to be careful.
Counselor Maslin, can you maybe enlighten us a bit more on your concern for?
Oh, well, you know, I don't want to inflame a situation, Mayor, you know, that I, I don't. But the, I would like to also, we're trying to deal with the parking variance for the Second Street Supportive Housing. And B.C. Housing is pulling back a little bit on that, not sure why, but anyhow. And this is probably the wrong time to be doing this because we probably, you know, should have done it some time ago. So that our downtown, our core, has a commercial function. There is, you know, the, you know, basically, commercial residential is what we are looking at. But we don't want, you know, locked doors on our main street. We want our city to be accessible to the public. Anyhow, Mayor, I think I got a motion, and I think I got a seconder. So if there's no other, I don't want to hold, continue the debate on it. We can either refer that motion back to count to staff or dispose of that motion right now, whatever you like, Mayor.
I don't think you can refer a motion.
I'm going to have to speak against your motion, Counselor Maslin, inasmuch as I can think of at least three businesses in the downtown core that you have to step up from a sidewalk to access their businesses. The Yellow Door Store is one, and the Flower Avalon Gardens is another, and Rob Vogel. You have to climb stairs to access his office. So to make them accessible, I'm assuming that you mean that you can just go in off the sidewalk right into their business. And there are already established businesses that, and Counselor Corlock's business. Also, you have to climb stairs to get it. So I really appreciate your intent, but I won't be able to support that.
Okay, can we revisit the motion? Daniel, do you have something to add to that?
Refer to staff for advice regarding public accessibility in commercial buildings is where I'm at.
Okay, all right. That seems like a reasonable request. And we have a seconder on that motion. Who was the seconder?
So it's going to staff to fight it for us and bring that.
Right. Okay, all in favor and opposed? Thank you, councilors. That is passed. And it moves us to late items and questions from the media and public. Do we have any questions from the media and public? Nothing? All right, a motion to adjourn. Counselor Thompson. Thank you, counsel.